Hello everyone and welcome to our live town hall meeting on YouTube. My name is Camden Bucy. I am in Libertyville, Illinois at the Reform Forum headquarters. And I have with me as usual in the office, Ryan Noah, our Director of Education and Advancement. Welcome, Ryan. It's good to see you today.
Thanks so much Camden. Good to be here.
Yeah, it's the end of a workday for us, just about wrapping things up for the week on a Friday. And we thought a couple of days ago would be good to take some time to schedule a town hall meeting and thereby be able to work through some of the things we've been, we've been doing lately. So we realize that, you know, we're working here full-time throughout the week, week in, week out, month in, month out through the years. And we understand quite a bit about what's going on and knowing all the details. We share some of the big announcements and everything through our email subscription list, our email newsletter, and whenever we talk to people in person, or whenever we're going particularly to conferences and catching up with people. But even there, you know, some people want to know more detail, other people don't. So we're taking the time here in this town hall meeting to share more detail. We will also, not only is this broadcast or streamed live on YouTube, and it'll be available on demand after the fact, but we will also put the audio of this into the podcast feed as a special episode. It's not taking the place of Christ the Center or any of our other programs. It'll just be a bonus episode in there and the people that want to listen can. Anyone else who doesn't want to listen to it can certainly delete it. And it's a skin off our backs. But we can at least say that we've updated everyone to a sufficient amount. So hopefully if this goes well, we'll do these kinds of town halls, meetings more frequently, maybe even quarterly. And for people that are watching live, we tried to announce this and put this out so that people could follow along. And it looks like 10 people just popped in right now at the beginning. So I hope that that picks up as people are receiving their notifications now in YouTube and on their apps that we are live, that people will also be able to chat in the YouTube chatroom and will be able to interact. So all that being said, thanks for joining us. We're happy to be here. We are really excited about what's going on in 2024. We have a big agenda ahead of us, but we also hope to have some time toward the end of our session. Hopefully we'll be done no more than an hour. I got things to do. It's Friday. You've got things to do and get home to our families. Have a good Friday night. But we'll certainly take time to answer any questions and try to, try to deal with those appropriately. So first things first, Ryan, why don't we start off and do a bit of a review? Talking about recapping our year-end campaign. We just had a planting for the future campaign for the year-end 2023. We've wrapped all that up. We put the information out to our email subscribers. But why don't we recap some of that and talk about how that went? And, you know, where we, where we came down in terms of our goals? And then we'll transition to looking ahead to 2024.
Sounds good Camden. Yeah, as you mentioned, our campaign name was planting for the future. And it shouldn't be any surprise about what, what future we're seeking to plant for. In its broadest terms, we're planting for a future wherein all of God's people are made mature in Christ. And how does Reform Forum fit into that? Well, we're, we're not the, the primary actors there. It's, it's the church fulfilling the Great Commission by the power of the Holy Spirit, who makes effectual the ordinary means of grace. Reform Forum, we want to come alongside the church as a servant, providing her with redemptive historical, faithful, confessional, biblical resources that are useful for her as she seeks, seeks to equip the saints. And so we, we're planting for a future as well for, for our organization as we strive to be serviceable to the church so that we can not only sustain, but also increase our ability to provide those kinds of resources that the Spirit is pleased to bless. Looking at all of our past giving levels and our, our trajectory going forward, we established some ambitious, even stretch goals in terms of total giving amount and total number of distinct donors. Those goals were 200,000 through 300 unique donors. And we issued eight different emails. We had a direct mail that went out. We had many social media posts, including photos and video testimonials. And the Lord was pleased to stir in the hearts of his people who joined us, contributing $175,000 through 221 distinct donors who made a total of 275 gifts. So this was our, our biggest year-end fundraising event or campaign rather to date. And it represented an unprecedented outpouring of, of gifts from God's people, even going past the 2022 year-end campaign, which ended at 159,000 and through 179 donors.
So remind me, so this isn't the most money we've ever raised in a year, but it's the
That was, that was 2022.
Just for clarity, so that I've got that straight, but it's, so it was close to. We did have a very strong year, but we were down a little bit year over year from last year. However, in terms of a year-end campaign, this was the highest, right?
That's correct. Yeah. So all, all told, our total nonprofit income for 2023 was approximately $330,000.
Donations, yeah.
In terms of donations, we also make, you know, or receive, you know, 30,000 more from product sales and tickets.
Tickets, books.
Et cetera. But that means that 88% of all of our nonprofit income.
All of our income.
All of our income, pardon, comes through nonprofit income donations.
Yeah. That's just what we call it in QuickBooks.
Sorry.
Nonprofit income for us in our QuickBooks is donations, grants, those types of things, either from individuals or funds or foundations of various sorts. So thank you. That's, that's very encouraging. So what do you feel about, how do you feel about that as Director of Education and Development? And then where do you think we're going next year or this year, I should say, 2024?
I mean, I'm tremendously encouraged. One thing that I'm, I'm most excited about and humbled by is that people continue to grow in, in, in number who come alongside us each year. So in 2022, we had 247 total donors throughout the whole year. And in 2023, that number jumped up to 282. And what's, what's also a testament to God's grace in, in working faithfulness among his people and continuing to bless Reform Forum and our labors is that our donor retention is, is really quite high. So we ask ourselves, how many people donated in 2022 and also donated again in 2023? 61% of people who donated in 2022 joined us again in 2023. So that's really encouraging and, and it's way over the industry benchmark, which hovers between 40 and 45%. So we're, we're really thankful for that. And it's, it's awesome to be able to go out increasingly and meet people face to face and, and tell them how much it means to us and how encouraged we are that they've come beside us in our efforts to support the church.
Amen.
And so we, we raised $330,000 last year. What does that look like in terms of our, our annual budget and, and our expenses? That's another question that we should address.
Yeah, that's a tougher one. It's challenging. We want to be transparent. We don't want to be Chicken Little. We're realistic. But part of this town hall meeting idea is to be transparent, talk about our needs. We're a nonprofit organization. We, our finances, all the stuff's public. People can download our 990 and look at all that stuff. You can ask us questions and we'll tell you how things are going. So we're always seeking to be good and faithful stewards of the resources that God has provided to us, whether those are financial or time or capital volunteer efforts, whatever it may be, we're trying not to waste. We have no intention of doing that, but even beyond that, we, we attempt to do things at high leverage. So we, you know, as one of our board members likes to say, we're always looking for the best and highest use of our people, of our time, of our treasure, so to speak. Talents, time and treasure, I guess. That's, that's how it's spoken of sometimes in the stewardship industry, if there's such a thing. So we did raise $330,000 last year principally through, well, that was through nonprofit income. And then what? Maybe about 20, 20 some thousand dollars from other sources of income.
Yeah.
30,000. So 380 in terms of revenue?
Yeah, 375, yeah.
375, 380. But our expenses last year were about 550,000. Is that right? Maybe more?
Even more, yeah. 578. I've got it in the
Okay, you've got it written down. So I'm just going off memory here. I know that we had ballpark, a deficit of 220,000.
That's right. Yes.
So now before people freak out and say, what in the world are you guys doing over there? This was known and planned. There have been years in the past where we had, you know, a 600,000 or $700,000 profit, you know, because we received significant amounts of what we would call in, you know, a different industry, you know, angel investment or seed money. So these are donations so that it's not as if we're giving away equity. We can't. There is no equity in terms of ownership of the organization. This is a nonprofit organization. It's not owned. It exists for the benefit of society, principally for the benefit of the church and to support the church and her charge of presenting every person mature in Christ. So no one owns it. The government recognizes this benefit. We're thankful for that. And people who give to this outfit for this purpose can do so tax-free, or at least write it off as a deduction on their taxes. So early on and for several years, we received very significant and generous donations to help us get started and to expand our efforts, expand our offerings and our activities in order that we pray, we would start developing revenue in other ways from other sources, whether those are from typical individual donors, not institutional donors and not necessarily major donors, but just people like you and me, people who might give 10, 20, $30 a month to, to a cause that we cared about. And also developing and expanding our activities so that we would also start to bring in income through potentially ticket sales to events or most notably book sales, other products, that type of thing. Now those haven't, those efforts haven't, they're coming along. We're doing a lot. We're producing a lot and we're having a significant impact. More and more people are watching, downloading our things, coming to events. As I like to say, if there was such a thing as, you know, a brand stock price, the, the, the stock in Reform Forum, I feel has never been higher.
Right.
However, I'm also the type of person that's always looking and figuring out bottom line and trying to understand, you know, long-term viability, long-term health for the organization. And when you have a $220,000 deficit on an overall budget of $580,000, that's, doesn't look good. Doesn't make, doesn't sit well with me. So that's something I deal with prayerfully and personally. But it's also something we're seeking prayerfully and humbly to appeal to the Lord and to also to appeal to all of our supporters to see, you know, if, if the efforts and the work here are valued at this scale or even perhaps at a greater scale. Because you and I both know what we're doing here is not probably sustainable long-term. Like you and I are doing a heck of a lot of things that it would be in the long-term wise to spread that burden across multiple people. We also have four part-time employees who do tremendous work and we love them dearly. They're doing excellent work, but there's only so much time and ability to do various things. So the question before us is first, is Reform Forum viable at its present scale? Meaning can we raise enough funds from sustainable sources to continue our work at this level? Preferably can we expand so that we can focus on higher leverage activities and involve more employees and contractors to do their best and highest use, wherein I and you and other people, faculty are freed up for their best and highest use? And if either of those questions, the answers to either of those questions are a no, then the question becomes, meaning we can't, we can't retain this scale and we certainly can't get larger, then the question becomes, you know, do we have to, how do we scale back? So we don't necessarily want to do those things. We don't necessarily think those things are inevitable. But this is the transparent town hall meeting in which we explain, these are the things we're discussing. And these are the things we're looking at, planning for the future and considering all potential options and praying to the Lord that he would lead us in the way that he should go. But we also want to be very transparent with our supporters and everyone in our community because it doesn't do us any good. It doesn't do you any good if we never talk about these things. Right. You know, it's like, if you need help in life with whatever, you should, you know, lean on your family, your brothers, your sisters, your people in your church, you express your need for help. And maybe you don't have the right idea of the kind of help you need. Maybe you don't need help and you need to be told that, you know, like there, who knows? But if you keep it to yourself, it's pretty much doing nobody any good. So that's why we're talking. So what are we looking for here in 2024? What are your thoughts on some of these things?
In, in, in 2024, um, you know, we're, to put, to put a point on what you're saying as well, Camden, in terms of a, a timeframe of, as we're looking at the life of our organization, as, as we've received, you know, significant donations in the past for us to be able to start up and open up our Reformed Academy and, and, you know, produce now 21 courses and have them subtitled and, and, you know, come to this wonderful headquarters where we can host events and have faculty in to record. That runway has, has an endpoint if, you know, we don't either cut costs or the Lord sends to us persons of, of significant means who are also rich toward God, who would, would want to contribute and invest in our mission. So if, if in 18 months, we continue just raising the same amount of funds as we are currently, we'll need to make some really hard decisions. And so this is an important year for us. And we had, we had a meeting with our, two of our beloved board members just a few weeks ago in order to talk high-level financial strategy, fundraising strategy, organizational health. And we came up with 10 action items that we're going to be, we're going to be taking up in 2024. Some of those involve using the technology that we have at our disposal in order to look, look at our database and, you know, consider who might be willing to make a big gift in support of our mission. We're also considering what kind of events we might host throughout the United States. We haven't really talked about international, but could be in order, in order to meet face to face with folks, stir up the joy of, of contributing to the church through Reform Forum. We've also spoken about perhaps appealing to folks who might be interested in donating to support a particular course or a particular translation or a particular symposium, you know, doing project-based, you know, appeals for donations. Those are just, just three areas we've talked about, but there are several more. And including education for yours truly on how to, you know, approach a situation like this with faithfulness before the Lord without seeking to compromise any of our integrity and in, you know, the way we go about things either.
Right. There's all sorts of other ways that people can fundraise and strategy. You could even hire external fundraisers, professionals, that sort of thing. You know, these are not things that are high on our list, but things, things we have to talk about and then see if they fit with our values. We haven't determined that right yet, right now, that that sort of thing is the kind of thing we want to do. But you know how it is. Everyone, everyone sees and, and sometimes you smile or smirk a little bit with, with some of the tactics that other organizations do sometimes, especially to appeal, to appeal to a certain type of donor with different cruises and vacations and all these kinds of things. That, those things they do because they tend to work. We haven't done those things and our core constituency tend not to be that kind of person. But that's also the kind of stuff that, you know, you know, opens doors to, to bigger efforts and that's type of thing. So I don't, I don't know. We're thinking about this stuff and we're working through it. I will say however, that our fundraising and our appeals and communications to our core constituency, our normal people that are listening to the podcast, that are coming to our events, that has been tremendously fruitful. And we have a tremendously committed and generous monthly donor base especially. So the numbers on those things have been going up and we have a system that's in place. It's working really well. We use CRM, a constituent relationship manager. Basically it's a donation management platform that manages all of our contacts and stuff. We moved to one of, you know, about two years ago called Virtuous. You can go to virtuous.org. We love that organization. They're a tremendous group of people. The system works really well where we've been able to integrate all of our email communications, our donor tracking, all sorts of other marketing data and everything all in one place. And then we have that hooked into all sorts of things such as our print newsletter or our online courses. We have all this connected so that if we can get someone in the pipeline somewhere at Reform Forum, we have a very disciplined, systematic, in some cases automated, but then we have personal touches all over the place that we are seeking not only to, you know, provide a resource to somebody, but to establish a relationship with people. And I think we've done, if I may be so bold, I would say we've done a very good job of that in the last couple of years. And we only want to continue doing even more of that. We never want to stop that in order to court a different kind of donor. We want to continue doing that pressing forth, but then also looking for other avenues for increasing our donor base and overall helping with the bottom line.
Right. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, that's my favorite part of my job, Camden. You know, just to speak bluntly about it is, is making those personal connections, you know? And that's where, that's where you hear a lot of, when I'm on the phone talking to a sustaining donor or someone who's, you know, you get a response, wow, I can't believe you wrote me a card for making my first gift. Things like that. And you start up a conversation and you ask, why, why are you committed to this mission? You know, and you hear incredible things from diverse things too, that are so encouraging to us and, and remind us that God is really able to do far beyond all that we would ask or think, you know? And he's, he's able to do it because he's our creator and he's faithful because he's our heavenly Father who loves and cares for us in Christ Jesus by our, by the Spirit too. So we're, we're thankful for those, those personal touches. And I know for you too, that's, that's not just like, oh man, I, we gotta try to be personal to people so that they give us more money. It's like, no, we gotta be personal because we love people. You know, and we want to see him grow in Christ and hear about their testimonies of how the Lord himself is growing them.
Yeah, yeah. This, this isn't, we're never disingenuous. This isn't a trick. You know, we, we love our, the people. They're tremendous. And spending time with them is great. Finding more ways we can do that, going around the country to do that is important. And hearing the stories of how people have learned and grown in their knowledge of Jesus and that in many cases, at least the people that are telling us that have been blessed by various things that we've done at Reform Forum. That is humbling. And we're very thankful for this opportunity. We want to continue our labors and we'll do so as long as the Lord wants us to. Let's transition and talk a bit about Reformed Academy since we've been talking about some resources.
Sure.
Just for clarity, people might not know what Reformed Academy is. It is our educational efforts. It's a kind of a sub-brand. It's underneath Reform Forum. It's basically a section of our website. But we develop all sorts of courses and we do so in video and audio and we make them available for free on our website and on YouTube. That's what we call Reformed Academy. So it's not as if some courses are part of the academy, other courses aren't. It's all Reformed Academy. But within Reformed Academy, we have different tiers or difficulty levels. Some resources are targeted towards adult Sunday School. Some are even useful for high schoolers, like our Westminster Shorter Catechism class or forthcoming class on Intro to Apologetics, that type of thing. But then we have some that are practically, frankly, post-doctoral courses. And then various resources in between. All of it's Reformed Academy, but that's, that's our efforts here. So Ryan, why don't you help us understand, bring us, bring people up to speed in terms of what we've done recently? And then let's talk about what we've learned over the years because some things we tried in the past haven't really worked out and we've kind of refined our, our approach. And we have some, some more stuff scheduled for this year.
Sure. Yeah, I'm really pleased to say that we have over 20 courses now. Five plus hour video courses available for free online at reformforum.org/academy. And there are presently more than 5,500 registered students from 87 countries that are, are enrolled in those courses.
On the, not on YouTube.
Not on YouTube. Just, just on our website.
The YouTube has about 16,000 subscribers now, but that's just subscribers. People, a lot more people can watch than are subscribed.
Yeah. So we're really thankful for that. Last year, we had another big year in terms of course output. We published eight courses in our Reformed Academy. And one milestone that we reached was the completion of Dr. Lane Tipton's Fellowship in Reformed Apologetics on the theology and apologetics of Cornelius Van Til. So the last three courses for that curriculum were published in our Reformed Academy, including the one on Christology and then Van Til and Bart and then Van Til and Idealism. We also continue to add to our adult Sunday School curriculum so that we now have, if you go to reformforum.org/SundaySchool, we have more than 10 courses that are designed for use in your local Sunday School hour or perhaps a Wednesday evening Bible study. I've heard of folks using it in that application too. Those courses come complete with handouts for, and discussion questions. And we're increasingly going to be adding quizzes for those as well. So really excited about that. The most recent one in that series was Dr. Mark Winder's Introduction to the Pentateuch, which is a little bit different format course. Those lessons are, you know, an hour to an hour and a half long, but they have real natural breakpoints that we've listed in the course descriptions. And you know, you know, how long you can spend in a Sunday School hour.
So there are several courses that are sitting on the hard drives in the studio because I haven't finished them yet. So why don't you remind or let everyone know what we're waiting for me to finish?
Okay, yes. So the first one, the next up is Carlton Wynn's Theology of Calvin's Institutes, Books One and Two, which he delivered at adult Sunday School level, really, really devotional, just tremendous material that will unlock the riches of Calvin, we hope, to a whole new generation. So you're going to be editing that and Lord willing, we'll have it out sometime, sometime sooner or rather than later. We'll say that.
We need to get through the Greenville Conference before we can really devote much time to, to doing the video editing, but yeah, we'll get there.
Right. And if you want a preview of that course, Carlton spoke with, with you Camden a few months ago, right after he came back from that, that worship conference with Terry Johnson and the brethren.
Yeah, David Hall.
David Hall, that's right. We also have recorded a course by Robert Arundale on Genesis chapters 12 through 25 called The Life of Abraham, in which he just brought his redemptive historical best, showing us how the, the themes in these chapters are, are to be understood in light of the whole of Scripture, which, which orients us to Christ Jesus and his saving work on our behalf. So those are really rich lectures. I mean, they're, it's, the, the line between lecture and sermon is blurred in that course as the, as it is in several. So really looking forward to that one. And then we have a follow-up course that is, is on the, the post-doctoral level, you know, perhaps or postgraduate level, a follow-up to Lane Tipton's Trinitarian theology of not Cornelius Van Til, but Thomas Aquinas. And this one is the course where he presents what he's called a totalizing alternative to Thomism. And it's, the working title is Calvinistic Trinitarianism, A Reformed Federalist Alternative to Thomistic Sacerdotalism. So gear up for that one. It's highly anticipated.
Sure. Yeah.
And it's really constructive. So it's, it's polemical certainly, but what he does that's so special is he seeks to show how Calvin's Trinitarianism and particularly his conception of autothein personhood has ramifications for the whole system of doctrine up till beatitude.
Very good. That's a lot of stuff on tap that's already been recorded. Will be edited and published soon. What do we have that's scheduled that we haven't recorded yet?
Well, you alluded to it a moment ago. You're planning to teach an introduction to Reformed Apologetics, which we could just call it Christian Apologetics because you're going to show how the system of doctrine that we, that we confess and the testimony of the Scriptures demands a presuppositional apologetic, one that's radically consistent with Scripture. So we're excited about that. Lord willing, that'll be suitable even for, for high schoolers, we're hoping. And if you want a preview of that, you can look up Camden's addresses that he gave out at Grace Church, Laguna de Gal. We'll talk about that in a moment, the trip we took. We're also going to have Dr. Lane Tipton come back into the studio to record. We're hoping at least three courses where we haven't, we're, we're not naming those quite yet. But we're hoping it could be an introduction to Reformed theology, perhaps a theology of Romans and, and more to come. We also have Jim Cassidy, who's going to come back to complete his Gospel of John series for our Biblical Studies series. And who else is on?
Will Wood.
Will Wood, of course. Yeah. Who teaches at RTS Atlanta and was really recently ordained as a minister of the Gospel in the OPC. He's coming in to teach on He's coming in to teach on a regulated, a biblical theology of the regulative principle of worship in the Old Testament. So that, that'll be an advanced level, I imagine. Looking forward to that in, in August.
Awesome. Love it. So lots, lots on deck. So we have several other things that we're going to be doing, but let's just start taking these, seriate them. You mentioned some events. So why don't we, why don't we turn to that and speak about our trip to California, California. Lots of songs about California. Going to California, got some Led Zeppelin, got some Tupac we could sing, I suppose. So why don't you tell us like what, what we did
Well, sure.
in California and give people a little bit of reminder. We had a really fun time.
Yeah. So this is, we've been going out to Escondido for a number of years. It was my second time there for the annual West Cal Westminster Seminary California Conference. Camden, you've been there since what, 2020 for that event?
It might've been before. Yeah, I've probably been four or five times.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. This, this year they opened up First Timothy, Chapter One, Verse Five, under the banner of Our Aim Is Love. And so we heard some excellent addresses from their faculty there, including some of their newer men that they have there serving the, the saints on campus. And right when we got there, we had a lovely dinner with some esteemed URCNA ministers, which was wonderful. Yeah. We continued and one of them will be at our, our symposium, Lord willing, that we're, we're working on for later in the year.
Yeah. Yeah, that's Dan Borven.
I didn't know if we could, we could say that, but.
Well, sure. And he came to dinner with Brian Lee. So I'm, those two have been outed. There's people that would eat with us.
Right.
But yeah, we had a great time and Dan's working on a symposium. We'll talk about that down the road. But we're hopefully going to be having a symposium on the reformation in the Francophone world. But that's going to be, that's not the next symposium we're doing. We have all that worked out. We'll talk about that in a minute. But Dan's helping us out quite a bit. So we're very thankful for that. So stay tuned for more information.
At the end of the evening, after the, the dinner and then the addresses, we were hosted by the, the Mercado family. Our dear friends Eddie and Hillary, who brought us on to what they call Westminster Village on campus, where they have lovely housing and all the students and their families can, can live there. And it's right next to the seminary and they hosted us for, for tacos and drinks and lively theological conversation with about a dozen students. So that was a tremendous opportunity to, to hear about them, their, their, their future ministries, their families and how we might, you know, support them as they, they look to, to serve in ordained service.
Yeah.
Next day, we, we finished off the conference at, at Escondido and we went up to Orange County to a church with whom we have a wonderful relationship. We know two of their, their members who have served as officers there for over 10 years now. So it was wonderful to go out to Grace Church Laguna de Gal in order to, to meet their congregation, to have fellowship with, with their pastors and, and the saints there, and also many in the community who came to join for a mini-conference that you did on apologetics entitled The Bold Defense. And I, I thought it was tremendous. It was a truly a jargon-free, non-parochial presentation of hardcore Van Tielianism, but just under the name of Biblical Apologetics. If you have this doctrine of God, this doctrine of man, this doctrine of sin, this doctrine of revelation, you're going to need to defend the faith in this way to the glory of Jesus Christ. And you nailed it, brother. I, I just was so encouraged. We had an excellent time, a Q and A that, that helped to draw out further implications of what you taught. And then the best part was worshiping with those saints on the Lord's Day, where you were also able to preach on Acts 17.
17, yeah. I love that. I was able to have that privilege and try to deliver and the Lord was very gracious to us. I had such a wonderful time worshiping there. Really lovely church. So in the seminar, yeah, I did, I did my best to try to, to deliver a non-watered-down, but extremely accessible version of Van Tielian Apologetics that any Reformed person would have a real hard time disagreeing with. So you may wonder, how's that possible? And I'd say, well, I'm trying my best here, but for some reason, you mentioned Van Tiel just gets some people upset and they just turn off. But I did my best to present the natural consequences, the necessary consequences of our reformed doctrines, which if you're in a Naparch Church, you should have no disagreement about those things, but then trying to explain the entailments and the necessary consequences for what those things mean for our defense of the faith. And that's pretty much what it was. So hopefully we'll have a full course, a video course on this that'll incorporate most all of that material and a companion book. So I'm working through a trial version of that. We're going to be, I'm going to be teaching it at my church, my church each week and not this week, but the next, starting. And then once I work out all the kinks and get some feedback from the people at Hope, I'll incorporate that feedback into the lectures and the notes, and then we'll record it here. And then Lord willing, publish a book with it all at the same time, I hope. So that's the plan. That was California. Then we flew home. The, the flight home was much less eventful than the flight out, in which they replaced a window on our airplane. So you never, it doesn't inspire a lot of confidence when a mechanic comes on the plane with a new window and puts it in. And then while that was happening, a guy in Ryan's, you know, two seats across from Ryan, Ryan was in eight C, the guy in eight A. And then he was moved to seven C almost, and then he was moved to eight or seven F almost, and then he was moved to eight F by me. He was eventually kicked off the plane and we had to be interviewed by Chicago police and all sorts of stuff. Kind of crazy, kind of a crazy trip, but that was, that was the start, but it turned out and ended a lot nicer and sweeter than it started.
Yeah, absolutely. With a great Lord's Day at Grace Church. Yeah.
Yeah, I did. I did lose a belt at Grace just somewhere.
In the parking lot or something.
I think it's in the back because I checked all that, but it must've been, I must've lost it because we, I had to unpack and reconfigure some things. So I lost a brown belt. If it's in the back of a black, what do we get? An Explorer? A black Ford Explorer with New Mexico hot chili plates.
Yeah, that's right. That was distinctive.
If you find that, mail it to us at the office. That's mine. So. Got something going on here? What in the world? My, anyone? My phone's starting to play music. It's never happened before.
I didn't even hear it. My, my hearing must be really bad.
Mine's must be really good. Anyway.
Geared up.
All right. This is what happens when we're live, right?
We've announced it, let's see, on our events page and Lord willing, we'll have more information in the forthcoming newsletter, but we're headed out for another conference to another sunny destination in just a couple of weeks. The Brethren at Providence OPC in Scottsdale, which reached recently particularized as a congregation of the Orthodox Presbyterian Church, is hosting their first annual Faith and Life Conference. And the theme is going to be A Christian Witness in Post-Christian America and will feature several speakers from our own symposium that we're hosting at the end of the month on February 29th. There will be Owen, Dr. Owen Anderson, Dr. Aaron Wren and Dr. David Innis, who is an associate pastor at another of the OPCs in town, Calvin OPC. So we're going to be headed out there. We hope to host a meetup at a local establishment that Friday night. So mark your calendars if you're in the area, February 23rd. We'll be at the Cornish Pasty Co. in Scottsdale. Just looking forward to, to hanging out, chopping it up.
Typing that wrong, but you were absolutely right. I was like, it's gotta be pastry, right? No, it's pasty.
Yeah, it's a British pub that serves this unique item, unique to.
They were, yeah, they were basically feeding like 19th century Hot Pockets to miners.
Yeah.
So it's like a double chambered Hot Pocket that had borders. And since they had arsenic on their hands, they would only hold the, the dough handles, eat it and not eat the handles because they didn't want to eat the arsenic that was on their hands and then throw those to the ghosts.
Right.
Who would eat, you know, eat them. I guess ghosts can eat arsenic laced dough handles.
Yeah.
Looked really cool. So the double chambers where one side was like meat and potatoes and vegetables, and then the other side had your dessert in it. So all in one thing, ingenious. And they serve these at the restaurant. So we're going to be there and I'm for sure eating a pasty.
Yeah, me too. I can't wait, can't wait to get to know some new friends out in Arizona and, and meet up with some old ones too. We'll be at Providence OPC on the 24th for that conference. You're going to host the panel discussion at the end of that.
Yes, I am.
With, with the conference speakers I just mentioned. And then Lord willing, you'll be ministering the next day from the pulpit, preaching the word of God. So come see us in Arizona if, if you're in the area or you want to travel. Should be a great, great conference, a great time of year to go to.
You got it. So that's going to be fun. We got some other events coming up. Let me introduce to you or share with you a couple of symposia, which is plural of symposium. You can also say symposiums. Let me see if I can get this on the screen. There it is. I got the website on the screen. So on Leap Day, February 29th, 2024, we will host another online symposium. We held one in August on Reform Moral Theology. This one will be titled Crossroads of Conviction. It's a symposium on the intersection of theology and public discourse. Scrolling through our participants, you can see them. If you're watching the video, we'll have Alan Strange, Daryl Hart, Nick Wilborn, Owen Anderson, who we will also see in Scottsdale, Arizona, Timon Klein, and then Aaron Wren, who we will also see in Scottsdale, Arizona. So I've already met Owen in person. I'm going to be interviewing Aaron for Christ the Center next week. So I'm going to have a heavy dose of Aaron Wren with a Christ the Center podcast, a in-person panel discussion, and then an online symposium. I just finished his book last night. Really enjoyed it, A Life in the Negative World. But you'll see our schedule here. I'm scrolling through. So I'll do a little intro, welcome and intro, explain our sessions, then Aaron's going to present. He's going to discuss his Three Worlds model and how Christians may begin responding to today's negative world. Get his book. Last I saw was less than half off on, no, more than half off is the right way to say it. Is, is 13 bucks on like a $27 hardcover or something on Amazon. I don't know if that deal is still going on, but Life in the Negative World, Confronting Challenges in an Anti-Christian Culture. That's at 11:15 AM US Eastern on Leap Day. Then we're going to have a session where Owen Anderson speaks about Old Princeton and secularism, exploring the phenomena of secularization, particularly focusing on the transformative changes that took place at Princeton Seminary and within Presbyterian education. Then we're going to close out our session in the late afternoon, early evening, 4:00 PM US Eastern with a panel on Alan Strange's new book, Empowered Witness, Rediscovering the Spirituality of the Church in Our Highly Politicized Age. So this is one in which Timon Klein, Daryl Hart and Nick Wilborn each will have read the book in advance and prepared some comments. They will prepare some questions, critique of the book. And then after each, all three of them are able to present, then Alan will have the opportunity to respond to all of them. And then if we have some time, we can, we can take some questions from some other scholars who will be present in the Zoom sessions and then also potentially any questions that are submitted on YouTube. I should say, all of this is free. It's going to be broadcast live on YouTube. The sessions are already scheduled on our YouTube page under the Live tab. So if you would like to attend, please, you can register online. You don't need to, but if you register online, we will email you updates so that you have emails with the links that are timely. You can also go straight to youtube.com/reformedforum. Go to the Live tab on our channel page, our channel, and then you can click Notify Me. And if you're using YouTube regularly or you have all the notifications set up, maybe on your phone or whatever, it will let you know when the sessions are about to begin, when they start. So you can watch live. Of course, you can watch recordings of them after the fact. But it would be best and most fun if you watch live. That's a Thursday. So we're looking forward to that. I did mention also the potential new symposium. I don't want to announce that fully yet, but we're, we pretty much have a date set and we have speakers set. We don't have any sessions determined, but we're looking to expand all of these things. It, it's, it's setting up. It's been poured. It's like the concrete that's been poured. So there's still some, some time to put your footprints in or your initials. But a lot of it's starting to firm up. So look for that in mid to late May. We will have a symposium on the Reformation and its effects within the Francophone world. That just means French-speaking worlds, which is includes France, the Reformation in France, but also Switzerland, for example, and you know, other places in Europe that speak French. So we'll be looking at that, which I believe is, other than Calvin and Geneva, certainly an underrepresented portion of the Reformation. There are so many great Reformed theologians in the Francophone world. A lot of them are under-read, under-appreciated, undertreated and studied. So we hope to remedy that a bit with several people who have published in very scholarly outlets with scholarly publications on the subject. So take a look at that. Last thing I'll say about the symposium for the moment is this is part of a larger strategy of advancing scholarship, but also providing a place for conversation and using our strengths, which is our network of people that we know and our technical know-how and our equipment to enable fruitful scholarly conversation. There's other reasons and a whole host of benefits that come from hosting these events, but these are our primary objectives. And I love seeing how the momentum is building. The first one was Small Potatoes, but it was excellent. People loved it, but not a lot of people knew about it or partook of it. This next one, we're hoping is going to be even bigger with Alan Strange kind of anchoring this, but now then adding Aaron Wren and Owen Anderson. We're really excited about that. The Francophone one could turn out to be pretty, pretty big. And then we have ideas. If we are able to keep the momentum rolling, we have much bigger ideas that we would like to implement, but we want to put one foot in front of the other or to use a phrase used, implemented by the productivity gurus, do first things first and one thing at a time. So.
I like that.
Yeah, man. Okay. Let's turn our attention a bit to Greenville. I don't have the info up right away. I'm pulling it up as we speak. But March 5th through 7th, we will be in Greenville, South Carolina, or technically Taylor's. And Greer, maybe? The church might be in Greer. I don't know.
Yeah, it's at a different location this year.
So we will be speaking, let me fire this up and you can see the 2024 Spring Theology Conference hosted by Greenville Presbyterian Theological Seminary is titled Modern Missions in the Reformed World. It begins on Tuesday, March 5th. We have been invited and privileged to be hosting, running, really, they're running it, but we're going to be there, you know, speaking at a pre-conference. To the ends of the earth, we're looking at the Great Commission. I will be speaking at 9:00 AM on Tuesday morning, that's Eastern time, in person at Greenville Seminary on the Great Commission and the Biblical Theology of the Nations. Then Jim Cassidy will be speaking at 10:00 AM, looking at missions in the Gospel of God from Romans 1:8 through 15, and considering the power of preaching in missions. And then Tony Curto will be speaking at 11 o'clock, of course, longtime professor at Greenville. He will be speaking on the teaching aspect of the Great Commission. So we're excited about that. And then the, the full-blown conference will, will, there's a lunch there at 11:30, but then the regular conference will begin in the afternoon at the church. Different location this time, much bigger. It's going to be at Heritage Bible Church at 2005 Old Spartanburg Road in Greer, South Carolina. We love going to this conference. I certainly do. We have such a great time at it each and every year. We hope you can come. I think they're going to have 650 or 700 people there this year. So it's a huge event. And we have just the greatest fellowship after hours as well. It's a high-energy event. So we're looking forward to this and very privileged to be part of it this time around, not just as exhibitors, but two of us at least as speakers.
Yeah, I was going to mention, we will have our, our exhibit. So please come by and see us. And Lord willing, we'll have a brand new book that we're expecting in just a few days. It's by Scott Hatch, Scott J. Hatch. It's called Van Tiel and the Foundations of Christian Ethics. And he, he takes a, it's something no one has done before, as far as I, as I know, certainly not on this subject. But he's looking at the, the textual tradition or it's a text critical look at the development of Van Tiel's ethics in terms of his Christian theistic ethics, the syllabi that he developed and polished and cut and refined over the years that he both taught it at Westminster Theological Seminary and also refined that syllabus into, until it reached its final form in the seventies, I believe, and then was published by Dan Dalk. But what's really special about this book is that not only does Scott give you all the textual history, all the historical context, letting you know what, what's Van Tiel dealing with here? what, what's Vantil dealing with here? Why did he cut this section? But he also traces that out to look at Vantil's heirs. A lot of people claim to be the heirs of Vantil when it comes to ethics, whether it's those who follow, you know, John Frame and perspectivalism, or Theonomy and Greg Bonson, or intrusion ethics and Meredith Klein. Scott Hatch weighs in on that in important discussion. And he also includes, for the first time ever, a, in the appendix, a never-before-published version of Christian Theistic Ethics from Vantil, and it's a critical edition.
Right. So he includes, yeah, a critical edition of Christian Theistic Ethics. So it's all of the various portions of it that have existed all in one with critical markings in the text to indicate where and when they appeared and when they were deleted, those sorts of things, because Vantil went through several iterations of it, as you mentioned, or syllabi to published versions. So all of that's there. Scott received permission from the Montgomery Library at Westminster for us to publish them. And so this book will be out very soon, Scott Hatch's book on the subject, including a critical edition of Vantil's Christian Theistic Ethics. So that's a, that's a pretty big deal for Reform Forum. If you come to the Greenville Conference, we likely will have print copies available for purchase. And we will also, of course, be mailing out all of the copies for the people that order them online, but we hope to kind of make that initial introduction at the Greenville Conference at our table. We also plan to attend the PCA and OPC General Assemblies this year. PCA General Assembly is first, which is a little bit different. That is going to be held in Richmond, Virginia. The OPC General Assembly is just down the road in Seattle, Washington, and I'll be there for that entire thing. And in between the two is the URC General Synod in Escondido. So I'm, I'm really trying to make it work where I can at least pop in for a day or two there, but given, it's tough with family responsibilities and all that sort of thing. So I'm trying to persuade, persuade my wife to go on a little trip where I could pop into the URC General Synod. Some of you URC brothers might advise me against that. I don't know. Let me know whether that's a good idea, a bad idea, what, what I should do. I certainly would like to take part, not actively taking part, but at least witness and be present and encourage the Continental Brothers, because we have a lot of good friends there. So we'd like to encourage them in various ways. Last thing we should mention on events and meetups is a potential future cities we might visit, because last year we did some meetups in Philadelphia, Dallas, and Atlanta, and we're considering some other trips. We've got the one coming up in Phoenix area, Scottsdale, and we did the little, the student meetup at Westminster, California, in Escondido, but where else might we visit? What, what's on the, what's on the list of options before us?
Yeah, we haven't made any formal plans yet, but we're considering New York. So we want to get out to the East Coast, whether it's New York, or, you know, somewhere in, in Pennsylvania, perhaps. We're also considering maybe another trip down to Texas or Oklahoma City, where we have a number of, of dear friends and supporters and want to build off the momentum of, of Lane Tipton's trip out there last year for the Benjamin B. Warfield lectures and meet with the churches there. So those are, those are the big ones. We're, you know, there's a lot of people we want to go see in California again, too. So we'll, we'll just have to see. Please pray for us, because all these, all these trips are costly, obviously, and we, we need to be strategic and do what's best in terms of the, you know, the churches we want to serve and the connections that we want to make that will, will foster our mission.
Mm-hmm. It's important work, but people also, you also have to have a holistic view, because there is the cost of getting somewhere in terms of travel, you know, car, plane, parking, all that stuff. But there's also, you know, we're out of the office. We're not able to do other work that we have piling up. But the work that we do while we're traveling and the people that we meet is tremendously and immensely valuable. So it's, it's a wisdom matter, a wisdom issue, but, you know, if, if it was just a matter of actually getting places, then you and I would, you know, be, if it wasn't a matter of expense or opportunity cost, or family issues, we'd just be on planes or in an RV going everywhere. But so, you know, there are constraints. And so we're trying to maximize our opportunities and minimize the expense while we recognize the expense is, is worth it, if the expense is reasonable. So we want to be able to meet with people. We are tremendously encouraged by that, but we can only do so many in a year for various reasons. So New York is high on the list. Getting back to Philly is important, and I need to go there anyway for various reasons. So it's always generally easy enough for me to make it to Philadelphia area at least once a year, because the OPC offices are nearby and I have family in the area. But going other places is a challenge, but if we can double up, because we're at a general assembly or some other conference, then we like to do that. Or if you have hunting opportunities, I could be persuaded.
Oh, there you go. Yeah.
That's my shameless, that's my shameless plug. I'm busy enough with hunting on the, on my own family spots and some public spots around here. But anyway, always interested in creative trips, put it that way. All right, let's turn our attention to the Reform Forum Magazine. You got anything? I know this is Peg, Peg Grimm, our publishing coordinator's domain, but do you have any, any updates on that, or should I take it?
Yeah, well, last year for our, our spring, we're doing a biannual magazine now. And so for our spring 2023 issue, we remembered J. Gressimaiten's Christianity and Liberalism. So for this year, we're taking another historical cue, not from 1923, but 1924, which is when we remember the infamous Auburn Affirmation. And we're using that as a jumping-off point to discuss, discuss the broader topic of confessional subscription and fidelity. So Camden, you're, you've written a historical piece with some, some reflections for our own day about the Auburn Affirmation. We also have one of the chief participants in our upcoming symposium, Dr. Alan Strange of Mid-America Reformed Seminary, where he's taught apologetics and church history for many years now, and the polyd classes in denominational history. He'll be writing a piece on the ominous imponentis.
Animus, yeah.
Animus, imponentis. I know what it means, but I don't know.
Yeah, you don't know how to say it. That's fine.
And then we also have Dr. Tim Skewers.
Squeers.
Squeers, pardon me, brother, who labors in the URCNA out in California.
At least he didn't say shewers.
Right, right. But he's written a, a book published by Oxford University Press on Calvin's Geneva and confessional subscription therein. So he's going to be writing something along those lines for our upcoming magazine.
Yeah, I'm reading his book. I'm reading his book now, Consciences and the Reformation. We're going to be doing a, a Christ the Center episode committed to that, where Tim Squeers, Dr. Tim Squeers will be on. It's an excellent, very well-thought-out scholarly book. I believe it's with Oxford University. It's one of the, one of the big, the heavy hitters. Pretty sure it's Oxford. Thank you for that. But Dan Ragusa is a friend of Dr. Squeers will be on as well. So I'm excited about that. I'm really delighted he also is going to be writing for the magazine. So this should be an excellent issue, not because I'm in it, but it's a good topic and nice, short succinct things, like my piece I'm still working on. I got some helpful feedback from Ryan today. So I want to tighten up and make the conclusion a little bit more punchy, but it's, it's fewer than 3,000 words, and that's long for one of these magazines pieces. So, you know, probably be in the ballpark of 16 to 24 pages. Again, it's either 16 or 24, because you have to go in multiples of four for these. But we can, you know, make everything fit and then play around with the images to, to make the text fit the pages. So that'll be coming out hopefully in a couple months. So if you're subscribed to the email newsletter, if you have given to us a US address and you're in our database, you, unless you've told us not to mail you anything, you will receive a copy of the Reform Forum Magazine when it's available. And you can, of course, always get it via PDF if you are subscribed to the email newsletter as well. Before we turn to a couple of questions I've collected through the chatroom, do you have any other final comments or remarks for the, anything we've missed or things you'd like to follow up on?
Um, you know, what, one thing, one thing we missed for Reformed Academy is that we continue to do translation work. So we have, let's see, last year we published Portuguese subtitles for your course, Introduction to Covenant Theology, Camden. We're really thankful to, to a team of four Brazilian brothers who worked hard on that project. We are, we just published Spanish subtitles for the Sixth Vantil Course by a lovely volunteer who's, who's worked through each one of these courses in her own time and done a terrific job. So thankful to Jessica. We also have a new front that's opened up, a new frontier in terms of our translation efforts in Indonesian. So we have now three brothers who are working on our Reformed Academy courses. The first course, Introduction to the Theology of and Apologetics of Vantil, is finished in Indonesian. We just have to have two lessons proofread, and we're going to publish that. And then next, it's Westminster Shorter Catechism. So I bring all that up to, to say this. We are committed to serving the global church. And, but right now, we, we're relying on really entirely skilled, theologically qualified volunteers to do that work. So if that's you, or you want to sponsor a, a project in, in a language of your choice, get in touch with us, because we'd love to make these materials not only available for free on YouTube, free in podcast form, free on our website, but also accessible in different languages.
Hmm, thank you. Great. Let's turn our attention to some Q and A. So I'm going to do my best, since this is just YouTube, I have to keep an eye on this to make sure I can copy and paste and answer these questions. Got a couple previously that I took notes on, but first I'm going to go to our friend Bo, where sad Bo moved away.
Oh, it's Bo.
Um, but he asks if I think Alabama or UM, University of Michigan, will have more wins in football in the 2024 season. I haven't spent enough time on Bama. I know they were losing the, one of the greatest coaches of all time. I know the coach coming in is excellent. He's got to put his own stamp on things. I probably think Bama is going to have more wins. I think Michigan will have three losses.
Camden, they're defending champs. I mean, that's not a real.
Do you know what they're losing?
I don't know. You never go against the champ, though, or the Midwest.
I think, I think Michigan's going to have at least three losses this year. One of them might be in a, in the playoff somewhere, 12-team playoff. Now, I think Michigan has a really good chance of making the 12-team playoff, but I don't know. I gotta, they lost a lot of coaches. They lost Coach Arbaugh, went to the Chargers. He took with him the defensive line coach. He took with him the defensive coordinator. He took with him the most, I believe, important person on that coaching staff, which is Ben Herbert, the strength and conditioning coach, who is a psychological master in addition to all of the strength training. He conditions the students' minds. He, he's gone. They've replaced all these people with important, significant people generally from within, although this morning they hired a 60-year-old defensive coordinator who hasn't coached college for 20 years. I'm sure he's competent. I trust the program to hire the right people, but I got to say, I wasn't enthusiastic about that hire, given the great success and the direction they went with younger people with high upside, the previous two DCs with Mike McDonald and, and with Jesse Minter. Anyway, this is not a football podcast, but I think Bo, you, I think you're going to sneak out perhaps with more wins, because, you know, you do, you, you pay for your players. And as long as you can, as long as you can keep them.
Yeah.
And as long as Ohio State doesn't buy all your, all your recruits from you, as they've been trying to do, you know, you'll be all right there. All right. So more serious, upcoming books. We already mentioned Scott Hatch. We already mentioned Scott Hatch and his book on Vantil's Ethics will be coming out. That is the first one up in the queue, but we have a couple others that are in various stages of publication. We have, remind me of this, because my mind is slipping. Lane Tipton has a companion book on union with Christ. I think that's been typeset. I haven't, I've seen it, but I don't know where we are in terms of ordering that book, or if we're waiting for some indices. Peg has all this taken care of and has reported all this to me. It's a matter of my brain not remembering. So this is, this is just me in terms of not knowing when things are happening, but that book will, should be out soon. We also are looking at Order in the Offices, a second edition, not a reprint, but a second edition. We've added some new material. It's going to be re-typeset, hardcover. That one is going to be out eventually. Hopefully, that'll be done and available prior to the General Assembly season. So that is an entire book with multiple contributions from a variety of authors on a three-office view of the church. So Minister Elder Deacon has three distinct offices, not two and a half offices, three offices. So that book is a book every Presbyterian ought to read, whether you agree or disagree. I believe it's a book that needs to be reckoned with. We're excited about that. What else has been typeset?
Dan Ragusa's.
Dan Ragusa's Fullness of Joy. I would just approved a back cover paragraph summary on that today. So, Lord willing, that'll be finished up. And that's a, that's more of a small, little book, a little booklet. It's probably 20, 25,000 words, maybe. So short, little guy. Then we have another book that has not yet been typeset, but it's moving to typesetting. It's a book by Danny Olinger, looking at Meredith G. Klein's view of Revelation. And it includes effectively not only all of the material that Klein has written on Revelation and some reflection about it historically and somewhat theologically, biblical-theologically from Danny, but also effectively a commentary on Revelation by Klein that has been pieced together based on all those writings. Then there's an anthology and a bibliography on Klein, too. So if you have any interest in Revelation, this is a book you need to deal with. And if you have any interest on Klein or biblical theology, this is also a book that needs to be dealt with. This, this is something, like you don't see books like this. It's highly unusual, unique, important, and we're doing our best to not only deliver the material, which is excellent, but to deliver that material in an excellent way, you know, in a really high-quality volume that, that is aesthetically pleasing. So what else do we have?
I don't know where, there's a few items that are nearing completion, or they're moving along, and we're hoping even they might be out by the end of this year. Jim Cassidy's companion book to Westminster Shorter Catechism, and what was he on? Lane Tipton's Introduction to the.
There's one on his desk on the Intro to Vantil, that's a companion book to the First Vantil Course.
Dan Ragusa has also translated the Dutch articles of Cornelius Vantil, which he wrote for De Re Formaci in between 1935 and 1940, at the invitation of Dr. Professor Claus Skildur. I forget how he has his titles, but Claus Skildur. So that's like Vantil's, you know, pulling no punches, historical take on the formation of the OPC, the downfall of Princeton to Bart, and various theological controversies. And so that, he's, he's translated those, and they're being proofread by, well, one of my old and beloved seminary classmates.
One of my students.
And yeah, one of Camden's students, a dear brother in the Netherlands. Yes.
Yes, very thankful for Yat. Lots of great insight from him. Some other questions? There's a question on any, any chance of doing an episode on Southern Presbyterians in the future? Yes, I already have some lining up. I hope to be recording several episodes of Christ the Center while we are at the Greenville Conference, looking specifically not at, only at the, the conference addresses that will be delivered there and doing a few podcasts with the speakers of those, but also mining the latest edition of the Confessional Presbyterian Journal. So there are several important Southern Presbyterian topics in that journal, as there often are. So we hope to speak with some of the authors there while we're there, and hopefully we can have them interviewed in person. The Symposium with Alan Strange will no doubt touch on Southern Presbyterians, especially Thornwell and potentially Dabney, because of the nature of the spirituality of the church and the debates in the 19th century, the Gardner-Spring Resolution and everything that was going on with the Union and with the Confederate States and the Civil War, et cetera, or the War of Northern Aggression, or the war between the states, however you want to put it. And then there are several other topics that are of interest, things. We have a history of the PCA coming out roughly. It's, you know, it's looking at irony in the PCA, which is a book that David Hall wrote. That has already been recorded. That's in the works. Well, I mean, it's sitting there waiting. It's going to come out in a couple of weeks. That isn't exactly Southern Presbyterianism proper, but it does come out of the PCUS. So the earlier portion of that interview does deal with Southern Presbyterianism. Okay, I don't know if I see a whole other, you got any other items while I scan through, or any comments on some of those topics while I scan through the questions?
Isn't, isn't the Confessional Presbyterian Journal, isn't it on the 50th anniversary?
It is.
Okay, that's what I thought.
There's, there's a lot of background, not only on that topic, but there's other. There's a lot of background, not only on that topic, but there's other background in there. There's a, there's a biographical piece on Morton Smith.
Right.
There are.
Southern Presbyterian.
There's a whole article in there on Southern Presbyterian ecumenism. There's another one on looking at ecclesial unity. I believe it's focused on the Southern Church, if I remember, but it's on ecclesial unity with regard to the doctrine of creation by Bill Van Doot Award. So there's, there's, there's a lot of stuff in there. And then there's also Machen's Reception in the PCA. And then there's, there's a handful of other articles on various topics of the PCA. So very important, very important issue.
Tremendous.
Good issue. I've read about half of it.
Yeah, I can't wait to see the cover for that, too. That's always one of my favorite things about that journal, just how, just how aesthetically pleasing it is from the, the type, the typesetting to the, the cover art. Trying to think what else we have, have going on this year, if we're missing anything, brother. Have we spoke at all about our conference coming up in the fall? Are we at liberty to, to share the, the theme for our annual conference?
We'll hold on to that for later.
Okay.
For a later symposium. But yeah, we're hoping the, the conference will be held, if I'm not mistaken, September 28th, whatever that Saturday is. It's a little earlier than normal, but save the date. We'll have information on that and stuff available on the website in the future. So I think we'll close it up there. Yeah, that was a question on the Theology Conference. So thanks, Scott, for asking that. Ryan beat you to it. So take a look at September 28th. It will be at Hope OPC in Grayslake, Illinois, as usual. We're working out other details and we'll have information on that to come in the future, hopefully sooner rather than later. Well, it is 410. I have a couple of shotguns of that caliber. Technically it's a caliber, not a gauge. Not that anyone cares, but it's the really like the one shotgun that isn't listed in gauge, is listed in inches.
Okay.
Small little shotgun, but useful. 410, you can kill a turkey with that with a tungsten load and you can shoot some varmints with it and it's fun. It's a good way to get, get kids started in some skeet trap shooting. But that being said, it also means it's time for us to start closing up because we're going to wrap this episode up, do some final work with the audio, see if I've got enough time to get it out there. Then we got to wrap up the, the studio, the office and head home for dinner with our families. So Ryan, thanks so much for taking the time for this town hall meeting. We hope everyone enjoyed it. Thank you to everyone who watched it live. Appreciate the amount of people that did so. And no doubt, many people will watch it after the fact, and certainly when it gets put into the podcast feed. I'm probably going to put it out on a Monday morning. We don't put stuff out on Sundays, but also I don't want to step on the latest Christ the Center episode with Greg Beal and Ben Glad. Ben Glad just announced, got a new job. That just popped out today. So the news, the news of that got announced right when the episode comes out on Christ the Center. So then I, I introduce him as a professor at RTS Jackson, which he still is for a while till June. But the news came out today. He's going to this TGC Carson Center full-time in June. So he'll still be teaching here and there, I guess, as a, as an adjunct potentially at Jackson. But that's big news. So take a look at that. But I don't want to, the way podcasting works and whatnot, sometimes people's clients only download the most recent episodes. So we try to space them out. So you people who watch live and watched on YouTube, you can feel like you got a little bit of a, of an advance. You got the news before all the other people, but the podcasters, all the, all of our tried and true, longtime listeners who listen via the audio through the subscriptions, you'll have this no doubt early on a Monday morning. So you wonder, what in the world are they doing releasing on a Monday? Cause they don't release a lot of stuff on a Monday, but at least as it stands on Friday, February 9th, that's my intent. So all that being said, thanks so much for listening, for watching. Stay tuned for future town hall meetings. We enjoy meeting up with you and perhaps we'll see you online at a future symposium or in Arizona, maybe even in Greenville, Richmond, Seattle, or possibly Escondido again down the road. So thanks so much. We'll see you next time here at Reform Forum.